Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call our city council work session to order. First item for discussion, one of my favorites, Suffolk Peanut Fest 2022 update. Mr. Deputy Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, good afternoon. As you can see out in the crowd, we have a bunch of members with Suffolk Festivals and the Peanut Fest Board speaking today on behalf of this group will be Teresa Earls, our Tourism Development Manager. She'll also introduce Richard Bradshaw, the Chairman of the 2022 Suffolk Peanut Festival. Ms. Earls.
You could be a little more excited. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Mr. Deputy City Manager. It seems like the older we get, the faster Peanut Fest comes around, and I'm up here quite a bit, but it really has been an entire year. So, the festival is coming up, October 6th through the 9th, at the Suffolk Executive Airport. You'll notice a red, white, and blue theme going throughout, and we'll get to that. This is our 44th annual festival. This year's theme is Broad Stripes, Bright Stars, and Patriotic Guitars: A Tribute to Our Hometown Heroes and the Red, White, and Blue. We have lots of pre-fest activities. Some of these had been put off because of COVID, so now we're back in action. We have the Suffolk Peanut Fest Queen's Banquet and Fashion Show that'll be held on Wednesday, September 28th, at the Hilton Garden Inn. It's $35 per person, and if you're interested in going, you need to get your tickets as soon as humanly possible, because they will not take tickets at the door. That will consist of dinner, silent auction, a fashion show, and of course, the crowning of the Queen and a pageant atmosphere, so there'll be interview questions and formal wear. It's a lot of fun, and it raises money for the Pilot Club of Suffolk. Thursday, September 29th, we have a new event, the Suffolk Peanut Fest Golf Tournament that'll be held at Sleepy Hole Golf Course. The proceeds for this golf tournament is going to benefit the Tunnel to Towers Foundation that supports the 9/11 survivors and veterans and first responders throughout our country. And then, of course, we're back to our Peanut Fest Parade. It'll be held on Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday, October 1st. It'll line up in downtown Suffolk in the Lakeside neighborhood and go down Washington Street to North Main Street, and then concluding at Prentice Street. And of course, everybody's favorite, Shrimp Feast. We found that the last two years, having shrimp feast on a Friday night worked out really well for folks that wanted to stay and have a great time, some a little better time than others, but that is the Ruritou Club's annual fundraiser. It'll be Friday, October 7th, from 3:00 to 7:00. They'll have music by Island Boy. Tickets are $40 per person. They're only selling 2,000 tickets, so you better get yours fast. They will sell out, and it's all-you-can-eat shrimp and barbecue and all the fixins, plus a few adult beverages to go along with it. The Demolition Derby is truly one of the most popular events at the Peanut Fest. That will be held this year on Saturday, October 8th, at 2:00 p.m. in the Suffolk Festivals Arena. There are cash prizes. This event is actually sponsored by Barton Ford Suffolk this year. We have lots of fun music on the schedule with our opening acts consisting of The Deloreans, Crazy X Band, Snack Bar Jones. In our headlining musical acts, we have the A-1A Jimmy Buffett Tribute Band that will be performing on Saturday night, and then on Sunday, we have the Ultimate Aldine Experience and the American Ride Tribute to Toby Keith. And of course, we'll also have Snack Bar Jones doing an encore presentation on Sunday as well. Some of our fest faves are back: amusement rides and our full carnival, our chalk art competition, which is sponsored by Suffolk Parks and Recreation, the Demolition Derby, and the Peanut Cup Race that started last year, and it does very well, so it's a lot of fun on Sunday. We have the world's only peanut butter sculpting contest, and if you think it's easy, I promise you it is not, and the more you try, the worse it gets, but it's really fun to watch. We have the Peanut Fest Clogging Jamboree with the Suffolk Peanut City Cloggers. We have the Swamp War Motorcycle Rally on Sunday, and then we have the Tomahawk Toss, so if you want to throw axes, that would be the place to do it. On Friday, we'll have Kitty Day, which means free admission for everyone until noon, and lots of kid-friendly activities and free rides for preschool-aged children. We'll also have a straw maze, arts and crafts, exhibits, and merchants, the petting zoo and pony rides, we'll have monster truck rides, fireworks, our Touch a Truck exhibit, our Imagination Station with Art Ventures, and we have an outdoor peanut lounge like we did last year, but it has a variety of acts, everyone from our high schools performing or middle schools performing to local and regional bands, and we even have princesses coming this year as well. Now, probably one of the most important assets to this year's event, especially given that we are doing it, our theme is our tribute to hometown heroes, we have the honor to bring the 9/11 Never Forget Mobile Exhibit. That is from the Tunnel to Towers Foundation in New York, and this is a moving museum. It's a tractor-trailer that expands to an 1,100-square-foot museum that honors the lives of everyone who lost their lives in September 11th, and the firefighters and first responders who also lost their lives on 9/11. And we will have firefighters who actually served at Ground Zero serving as docents throughout this museum. We are very fortunate that Dominion Energy sponsored this for Peanut Fest, donating $20,000 to the festival to bring this particular exhibit and to make it available to the entire community to witness history. Some other new things we have for this year, we have the Kent Family Circus, so acrobats, fire eaters, unicyclists, and all kinds of fun, kid-friendly stuff. Johnny D. Robot, you can see him, he's the tall, green guy on the second picture. We also have tethered hot air balloon rides, the Autobots, which are technically Transformers, if anyone remembers the '80s and from then on, it's going to be fun. And we have superheroes coming this year, so we're super excited. Now, here's what you need to know, how to get into the festival. Suffolk Peanut Fest, 6th through the 9th of October. On Thursday, admission is free for everyone from 4:00 to 10:00. It's also carload night, so if you want to bring up to eight people with you, you can get All You Can Ride wristbands for up to eight people for $50. That is a steal. On Friday and Saturday, we'll be open from 10:00 to 10:00, and it's $10 per person, and children ages 10 and under are always free. And on Sunday, we will have our Military/First Responder Appreciation Day, so if you have a valid, active, or retired military ID or a current first responder ID, you will get in for half price, which is $5 per person. We also have All You Can Ride wristbands for $30 per person on Sunday. You can go ahead and purchase tickets online if you'd like at SuffolkPeanutFest.com. Parking is free as always, and we will certainly sell tickets at the gate, and cash and credit cards are accepted. Now, with that, I know I ran through that really fast. Richard Bradshaw is this year's chairman, and I'd love to have him come up here and say a few words to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Bennett, Honorable Counsel, and Deputy City Manager. As the 2022 Suffolk Peanut Chairman, I'd like to personally thank you and the city of Suffolk for the tremendous support given to the festival. A true partnership for this four-day event would not happen without the coordination between the festival and the city. I would be remiss if I didn't also mention the incredible dedication to nearly 200 volunteers who devote their time, efforts, their personal vacation time, weekends, and so forth to make this family festival for everyone to enjoy. Just as you saw in today's presentation, Suffolk is honored with the welcome of the Tunnel to Towers 9/11 Never Forget Mobile Exhibit generously supported by Dominion Energy. When seeking my patriotic theme for this year's event, I wanted to convey gratitude for our military, service personnel, our first responders. I can't imagine a more thoughtful way to do so than recognize those who gave their lives, both civilian and otherwise, on September 11th. The feeling that swept this country immediately following that tribute was unity, strength, and patriotism. The red, white, and blue that consists in each of us is what unites our community together with our rich agricultural history, promises to make a wonderful 44th Annual Suffolk Peanut Fest. I invite you, your families, your friends, to take pride in one of Suffolk's largest running events and join us for this weekend. Thank you again for your support.
And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Theresa, Council. Questions or comments? Be quiet.
That means you'll all be there.
Councilman Fossett? Gotcha. Councilman Fossett.
Okay, Teresa, thanks. Teresa, thank you again for coming up and giving the presentation. Just one comment on the Tunnel to Towers mobile unit that's coming here. Just for people that don't know, that unit only has gone to very few places, and I think we've only had it probably in maybe one other place in Virginia this year so far. So to get that here is a magnificent display that people should take the opportunity to go out and visit. That is a remarkable unit. I think they'll be amazed by what they see, but I just wanted to bring that up, that we were, you were right, we were very fortunate to get that mobile unit here, because that could have gone anywhere in the country, and we were lucky enough that we're going to have it here in our city, which I think we're going to have a little procession that goes through our city on Friday that takes it out to the Peanut Fest, which ought to be really exciting and extraordinary to see. So, thank you for the presentation. Look forward to the Peanut Fest. Hope we get good weather, and I'm not trying to jinx it.
Knock on wood.
I'm not trying to jinx it. If we could get some days like we had last weekend, on that weekend, we would have it knocked out of the park, believe me.
We know how to have a good time, whether it's raining or sunshine, so either way's good.
Yeah, I know. We've been there through it all.
Sunshine is preferred.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Teresa, Mr. Andrews is in the, can he come up and tell us a little something about the parade? Give this group a...
Well, I've never known Tiny not to have comments, so, yes, I believe he can.
He's been a friend for, I don't know how many years. We knew each other, I don't know, 70 years, Tiny?
Well, I would probably say so. We are of that age. Anyway, I don't know how many of you are familiar with what the Tunnel to Towers is and how it started, but if you've got a second, I'll tell you. There was a young firefighter, 34-year-old father of five. His name was Stephen Siller. He was a firefighter in the city. He was off on the day of 9/11. He was going to play golf with his siblings. He was the youngest of seven. He was on the way to the golf course to meet his brothers, and in the scanner in his truck, he heard that a plane had hit the towers. He called his wife and said, "Call my brothers, tell them I'll catch up with them, but I got to check this out." He went to the Battery Tunnel, which I believe goes from Brooklyn into the city. It was already closed. He put on 60 pounds of firefighting gear, ran through the tunnel, ran to the World Trade Center, and went up and did not come back with 342 of his other firemen brothers. So his family honored him with this foundation. They give, they immediately take over the mortgage of first responders that die in the line of duty. They provide smart homes for the catastrophically wounded vets. They are starting into the homeless veterans and doing foundation work for them. And with Mr. Bradshaw's theme, we thought it was a good idea to try to bring this thing in, and you are right. It's only, it's been in Virginia twice that I know of. The last time was up at Colonial Downs, which is now Rosie's Gambling Center, but that's as close as it's ever been to Tidewater. So, getting on to what Donnie's question was, we thought it would be a nice deal if we honored this unit by having some local firefighters and first responders come for an honor guard procession. We have gotten, as I told the members of the city manager's staff, we've gotten positive responses from 31 fire departments, all this side of Williamsburg will be sending a unit to be part of this honor guard procession. Fire departments from North Carolina have now heard about it. They want to be in on it, so they're coming. We'll be organized on Prentice Street. The Patriot Guard will be there. It escorts a lot of the fallen veterans once they pass away into the veteran cemetery. Several other groups that are honor guard-type escorts are coming. Weather-dependent, you know, that number can go up or down, but we are expecting, like I say, 30 to 35 fire trucks, upwards of 150 motorcycles. We are also going to have a beam from the Freedom Flag Foundation based out of Richmond, a young man that is a Suffolk-bred native, went to high school with me, we reconnected. He designed the official freedom flag for the state. It's been accepted by the state legislature. You know him, Richard Milito, Jimmy's younger brother. He now has a restaurant in Richmond, and it's been accepted by the state of Oklahoma, and two weeks ago on Friday was accepted by the state of Delaware as their official state freedom flags. So their foundation has a beam from the 92nd floor of the North Tower. That will be here as well. It will be in the procession, it'll be at the golf tournament, and it will be on display at the festival. So, that's what we've got going on. I would encourage you to come, especially Friday morning, the 7th. This procession will go in. We're going to try to clear downtown as soon as possible, because it is a workday for our citizens, and the court will be in session, so we're going to clear downtown as quick as possible and go to the festival site. If you've ever heard of a little group from Norfolk called the Virginia Tattoo, Bagpipe and Drum Corps, they will be waiting for it there, so it's going to be just like it is in New York. We're going to have the Bagpipe and Drum Corps pipe them in in the procession. The fire department will have the twin ladder trucks with the flag hanging. Every person that comes onto that site in this procession will go under that flag. So if you can just imagine the young people in these fire departments and police departments that weren't even born at the time that this happened, they're in the academies and stuff, what an honor it is for them to be part of this. So, I encourage you to come, especially Friday morning. That's when we'll have a little bit of pomp and circumstance, weather-dependent. If we have bad weather, it could just be a circumstance, so, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, Teresa, thank you very much. Obviously, this truly is going to be a very special Peanut Fest, and it always amazes me every year how many volunteers are involved, the manpower hours, the logistics, even for law enforcement personnel to put this together as far as traffic control and security is going to be a huge task. So, I appreciate everyone who has their hand in it. Don't forget about the, I'm going to put another plug in for the shrimp feast on Friday. It actually works a lot better on Friday than Thursday, because if your head gets too big, you don't have to work on Saturday. Be safe, whatever it is that you do. And in regards to the weather, normally for National Night Out, we put Sheriff Harris in charge of that, so you may just want to give him a call and see if he can arrange Peanut Fest, too.
Well, shrimp feast always works out for him, so that makes a lot of sense.
There you go. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next topic will be the City Assessor's Staff Awards Recognition. Mr. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council with us today is Billy Butt, the Suffolk City Assessor. He's going to share with us some recent staff accomplishments and recognitions.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Thanks for giving me a little time this evening to brag on a couple of members of my staff tonight, so. I have with me here Erica Cowling and Kevin Prine. Erica is one of my residential appraisers, and Kevin is the deputy assessor. This picture that you see on the screen was taken at the IAAO Conference last month in Boston, where these two took center stage for receiving pretty prestigious awards by the IAAO. First, Erica Cowling. She received the IAAO's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Scholarship. It's a scholarship established to assist an individual underrepresented in our profession to attend IAAO's annual conference and exhibition. If I could take a minute, I'm going to read the IAAO Statement on Diversity. "As a global community of diverse mass appraisal professionals, we can best fulfill our mission and vision by ensuring all individuals experience an equitable, inclusive, and IAAO environment. We incorporate DEI principles and practices into our goals of professional development, community engagement, communications and advocacy, and business innovation. To sustain this commitment, we implement meaningful metrics and measures." I wanted to read that because I believe strongly in what it says, and I believe it's important in the fulfillment of our mission here on the local level. So not only did Erica attend the conference, but she served on the planning committee for the conference this year. She hosted a heavily-attended roundtable discussion entitled "Bridging the Gap Between Appraisers and Administrative Staff," and she also serves on the planning committee for the education seminar and the conference for the VAAO, which is our state chapter. So, congratulations, Erica. Next with me is Kevin Prine. Kevin was awarded the IAAO Officers Clifford B. Allen Most Valuable Member Award. This award is the oldest and most coveted award IAAO presents at its annual conference. The award is presented to a member who has made a significant contribution to IAAO for a number of years by participating in its activities and working towards the realization of the IAAO mission. Kevin has served on countless committees and task forces at IAAO, such as the Education Committee, the Nominating Committee, and currently sits as chair of the Professional Development Committee. He's written numerous articles in IAAO's fair and equitable publication, made several presentations, and led numerous roundtable discussions during the annual conference. I'm also pleased to announce that Kevin will be installed as president of VAAO in So again, to say I'm proud of these two would be an understatement, but they epitomize my entire team, and I feel very fortunate to have not only them, but the whole team here with me. So, again, thanks for your time and thanks for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Butt. Council, questions, comments? Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say congratulations to both of you for job well done, and I'm glad that you all are representing our city well, and all your honors that you received, you brought it back home, and that means a lot to share with your coworkers and the city, other city employees, what it's all about to be active and be a part of what's taking place in this city. Again, congratulations.
Councilman Fossett.
Just briefly, I just want to congratulate both of you on fine work going ahead, pursuing those awards and getting involved. You know, it's kind of like, for a long time, we didn't hear anything out of the assessor's office, and all of a sudden, the flower has bloomed, and now we're starting to see some great things coming out of the assessor's office, and it's a great tribute to each one of you and the rest of the staff that's in there that's working hard, and I just want to say thanks for doing what you're doing. Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, outstanding, congratulations on your outstanding accomplishments, your professionalism and dedication is obviously a big reason why, as Councilman Fossett alluded to, I don't get too many calls about the assessor's office, and normally when it's quiet, you guys are doing an outstanding job. So once again, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
All right, our next topic will be from Cox Communications, Suffolk Business Services Update. Mr. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. By way of introduction, I'll first draw your attention to your regular session item, number 16. That's a motion to hold a public hearing at your October 5th meeting granting a license agreement for the installation of telecom services. This is for and working with Cox Communications for their business services that they provide in the city. Want to make sure I emphasize business services. And so joining us today to provide a little more color and information on that is Erin Rice. She's the Senior Manager of Public Affairs for Cox Communications. Ms. Rice.
Well, thank you for that introduction, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Bennett, Members of Council. As Kevin mentioned, my name is Erin Rice. I'm also a proud Suffolk resident. I live here in the city in the Holy Neck Borough, and I thank each one of you for your service. I know tonight's meeting will be long, so I will be brief, but I did want to thank you for your service to our citizens. This evening, I just want to give a little bit of an update about Cox Communications and who we are. We are a branch of Cox Enterprises, which is a family-owned business that has four generations of family leadership. We are the largest privately-held telecommunications company in the United States, and recently we were recognized for our fastest download speeds also in the United States. And we do that through sound investments in our network, and you can see, over the past five years, we have made significant investments in our network in making sure we provide the services to our customers and to our clients efficiently. We saw through the pandemic that affordability and reliable internet was essential. It was our ways of communicating with one another during that very difficult time, and so we recognized that, and we have made sound improvements in our network across the country. Just a little bit of Cox Communications in general. We have three separate divisions. Our Cox... Our Cox Communications, or Cox Business Services, which is what I will be highlighting this evening, and then our Cox Media Group. Cox Communications has been providing service here in the Commonwealth of Virginia for 40 years. You can see from the slide a little bit of an overview of our footprint. We began here in Hampton Roads, and so we provide service to all of the South Side cities. And then we stretched from the Chesapeake Bay all the way up to, almost to Richmond, providing services in New Kent County. We stretch up 95, providing services in Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania, Stafford, and then up towards the DC metro area and providing services in Fairfax County. Where I am from originally, we also provide services out in Roanoke, Roanoke County, Roanoke City, and the town of Benton. In Hampton Roads, we are a staple of the community and a staple of the economics of the region. We provide a significant employee base. We have, in the Commonwealth, we have about 1,800 Cox employees. In this region alone, we have about 1,200. And I can tell you, I am not the only Cox employee that is proud to call Suffolk home. But tonight, I want to really provide an update about the expansion project and the services that we provide here in the city for Cox Business. We provide support to businesses of, in, in-home businesses all the way up to large-scale businesses. In the past couple of years, we have been really investing in our network. We have been here for approximately 20 years or so. First, we had a right-of-way agreement with VDOT when VDOT maintained the roads here in the city. And when that authority was transferred over to city council, we had that right-of-way agreement with the city. And so our last right-of-way agreement was provided in 2017. And I just want to give a little bit of an update on what we have been doing over the past five years. We provided significant investments to our network here. We invested $3.5 million. This project began in April of 2020. That's the construction phase of this project that began then. We had been researching and figuring out ways to provide better service to our customers prior to that. We upgraded and extended our footprint, and this has facilitated the ability to provide 10 gigabyte speed to our customers here. We did that through laying nearly 30 miles of fiber, and we are happy to report that we completed that project in March of this year. Because everyone's probably wondering where we were. You can see from the map on the screen that this is where our fiber is laid. The blue, red, and green portions of the map show you where we provided new expansion services. So you can see, we stretched from Down 58 Portsmouth Boulevard into downtown. Then we go up Main Street, connecting with Godwin Boulevard and connecting some of those areas of the Hillpoint area. We also stretch up Nansman Parkway, up through Driver, and then over to Chesapeake on Nansman Parkway as well. We'd always been in the city, as I mentioned, for more than 20 years, but we were predominantly within the northern part of the city. And we felt that this was a great way to connect all of the city. Just a little bit about our services in general. We provide fiber internet to businesses. We provide voice solutions, so that's telephone. And we provide cloud-based solutions and security. So, security is very important to us. And so we want to provide those businesses the, the systems in place that they can protect their data and protect their systems. Just a little bit also of an overview of our packages that we provide. These are most common packages, but we can customize that to the needs of the business. And all of this information is on our website at Cox.com/business. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain that. But one of the, the best things, and the things that I'm most proud of about working for Cox Communication is our commitment to the community. We have a mission of improving the lives of 34 million people by 2034. And we do that through donations to nonprofit organizations here in the region as well as boots-on-the-ground volunteers in the field. So, earlier in March of 2020, the James M. Cox Foundation provided a $250,000 grant to four kids to provide critical services to that nonprofit organization during the pandemic. As you know, we have a four-kids location here that services Western Tidewater, and some of that money did go to support those programs here. Additionally, our volunteers from Cox will be out in their blue shirts tomorrow up at Sea Air Point for Four Kids Field Day. And we will be supporting that as they raise funds for Four Kids as well. And with that, that completes my formal presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. My contact information is on the screen, so if you or anyone has any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. And with that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rice. Counsel, Councilman Johnson.
Erin, I, what is the future of Cox in this region? Are you going to continue to expand the lines?
Yes, we are continuing to research in ways to expand and upgrade and offer more connection and more services, not only in the city, but just in the region in general. We recently launched a huge expansion project, like I've mentioned, in New Kent County, where we are working to provide residential fiber services to the entire county. So we're constantly evolving. We're constantly looking at ways to provide better services, more services, and connecting more people.
And how far out on 58 do you actually go?
I'm not exactly sure, but I will get with our Cox Business people.
This is curious, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get with our Cox Business, our main point of contact, who is unable to be here tonight. I will touch base with him and follow up with an answer on that.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Erin, thank you very much for your presentation. Keep up the good work, and thank you very much for your philanthropic efforts, especially, you know, Four Kids is, is a great cause, and it was opportune time to provide those funds to them. I'm sure they put them to good use. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin. Good luck tonight. Thanks.
Okay, that concludes our work session. It's my understanding we do have a motion for a closed session. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment appointment and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown in the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Agricultural Advisory Committee, the Clean Community Commission, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the Historical Landmarks Commission, Human Services Advisory Board, Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, the Western Tidewater Water Authority, and the Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference, Business Meeting, and Urban Section Meeting, Voting Delegate and Alternate.
Counsel, a motion has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Counsel members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.